So we either. I knew that we were recommend, but the other side of that's our options are. Geez, Joe, just in time. Got five seconds left. Okay. Safety first. Shall we get started? Because Ava's on, we have a quorum.
You have a quorum.
All right, then I'll go ahead and open our meeting at 6:30. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We will start by reviewing our minutes from our meeting on September 5th.
Commissioner Wood, I need to take attendance.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Please take attendance, Angela.
Commissioner Wood.
I'm here.
Commissioner Journey.
Present.
Commissioner White. Commissioner Graybill.
Yes, present.
Commissioner Walthius, I have not heard from him, but I have heard from Commissioner Melter that she would be absent.
All right. Before I move on to the meeting minutes, then I will open for a public comment. This is an opportunity for any members of the public to address the planning commission on topics that are not listed on the agenda. And I just want to remind anyone who is here to make comment about something that's on the agenda. If you could please sign in in the back so that we have your names up here when the time comes. With that, we'll move on to the meeting minutes, approving the meeting minutes for our meeting on September 5th. Did anybody see any changes that needed to be made?
Nope.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
All right, there's been a motion to accept them. Is there a second?
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 What do we need to do? There's Ava. Perfect. Then it is approved. We will move on now to our first order of business. To my meeting minutes here, and that is the reviewing the Sweet Home Park System Plan. I'm going to open that hearing at 6:32. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, evidence must be directed towards the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use. Land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise the issue accompanied by statements are evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue procedures appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. We'll move on to our declarations by the commission. Does anybody have any personal bias?
No.
I have none.
None.
Any conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
And I have none. Any ex parte information?
No.
I have none.
No other than familiarity.
Okay. Ava?
She's shaking her head no.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, so we will send it over to then open it up, then invite our applicants.
Our consultants.
In this case, yeah, in this case, the city is more or less the applicant. And so this, as you are aware, we've been working for some time on a update to our park system plan. And it is now complete in draft form. The the intent is to adopt it as a sub-element of our comprehensive plan, which is why a public hearing is necessary. And and so we'd like to invite our consultants up to to talk about their work.
Wonderful. All right, then I'll invite Colin and Elizabeth. Come on up, have a seat. Just state your name and address for the for the record.
Oh. Hi, my name's Elizabeth Oville. I'm a landscape architect at Cameron McCarthy.
Thank you. I'm Colin MacArthur, Principal Planner with Cameron McCarthy. Our home address is, our office address is 160 East Broadway, Eugene, Oregon, 97403. And we represent the applicant and will be providing testimony on their behalf.
Thank you.
All right, first slide, please. All right, thanks. So I'm going to give an overview of the park system plan project, the different phases that it involved, and then wrap up by essentially explaining what the draft master plan recommends. Next slide, please. All right, so as Blair mentioned, we've been working for a while, about over a year, on the park system plan process. And then recently, we've been documenting that into a draft report. Let's see, and then during that process, I want to note we've met with city council and the park board multiple times. Next slide, please. All right, so the first, one of the first stages of the project is an inventory of the existing park system. Excellent. So we document park locations and classify them according to National Park and Recreation Association guidelines. Next slide. Okay, great. And then as part of that, we not only look at the facilities and what the conditions of those are, but also acreage and miles to quantify the system. Excellent. Great. Level of service is kind of the next stage in the process. We use the inventory that we've built to then assess the current service that the the park system is providing. Okay, great. So we use, again, national recreation standards for assessing service. There are several ways, three are ones that I'm going to speak to. The first is walkability. So this looks at essentially a radius of reasonable walkability for parks, which is a quarter mile. We then map that radius around a number of parks in town to assess where, like which residents in Sweet Home have walkable access to parks. And then that also sheds light on which areas of Sweet Home do not have walkable park access. And as part of that level of service, we are able to identify the east side of town is lacking parks. Excellent. Great. A second measure of service is looking at a ratio of residents per park. So we assess that ratio for the city of Sweet Home, and then we compare that to similar-sized agencies based on data that the National Park and Rec Association provides. For the residents per park ratio, Sweet Home is towards the upper end of the spectrum, which you want to be towards the middle or lower end, which means that you have fewer residents per park. And one thing to note about level of services, as population continues to grow, adding more parks to the system is important so that that ratio either maintains itself or improves over time, which means enhancing the service of the system. Next slide. All right, the last metric for measuring level of service that I'll share is one that looks at acreage of parkland. So for this ratio, park providers are striving for a higher ratio, meaning that there's a lot of parkland per thousand residents. Sweet Home is scoring on the lower end of that spectrum. That's something that an agency would like to be more kind of in the middle or upper end of that spectrum. And then again, we're noting, we expect population to grow in Sweet Home over time. So adding park acreage to the system would allow for the service to either maintain itself or improve. Next slide, please. All right, so I'm also going to review the community involvement process that we've done and the methods we've used. Next slide. So we use three different methods. We interviewed community members. We hosted an online survey, and we also attended in-person events in Sweet Home, including the Harvest Festival and then a day where the summer reading program was in Sankey Park. The next slide, please. Thanks. So across these different outreach methods, there were subtleties for the feedback that we heard, but there were also common themes, one of which was most residents felt that additional parks are needed in Sweet Home. They were also passionate about improving the existing parks that are in town. Sankey Park was a really beloved park by many people, and there was excitement about potential to improve other parks in town to reflect some of the qualities there. See, next slide, please. So some other things that were noted where people noticed that the east and north parts of town are in need of parks. And we are also able to identify that people had a pretty positive view of park maintenance currently, and they're satisfied with that. And then the last thing I'll note is just that the, there was a number of park amenities that kind of rose to the top. Amenities centered around play, covered spaces like picnic shelters, and then circulation or trails, paths and sidewalks were also really important for people. Excellent. I think I covered everything there, but just it highlights again that like there were really consistent themes across the park amenities people were interested in. So that was very helpful for the process. Next slide. All right, so a needs assessment is the next part of the project. We use the inventory of the existing system. We use the level of service analysis, and then we also take into account the public's input as well as a study of national and state recreation trends. And we combine all of that information into a needs assessment. Next slide. And I'll review the key findings that we identified in that assessment. So there is a need for developing facilities and improving facilities that are in the current park system. Specifically, we noticed facilities that center on play, trails and paths, water recreation, any kind of social gathering spaces, as well as natural areas, were identified as facilities that could have improvement. Level of service and connectivity was a key finding. So this ties into the the park need on the eastern side of town, as well as creating, supporting walkability to those parks, which could look like improved sidewalks or new paths or trails, or improving upon existing ones. That's related to the third finding, which is that physical accessibility came up a lot. So in the inventory, as well as personal sharing of information that we heard from people, they they would like to be able to move through parks better. So improving surfaces so that they're ADA compliant is a priority for the park system. Next slide. And then it was noted throughout the process that funding and new funding sources is really important to be able to maintain, but also improve upon the park system. There was, we did hear data about, you know, people recommending that partnerships could contribute to that as well. And then the last finding is improved access and inclusion. So this came out of some feedback about just providing a variety of park facilities. People wanting to see the parks have facilities that reflect their interests regardless of age or ability. There is also interest in signage. This is a particular one that we heard a lot was people not necessarily understanding where parks are or how to get to them. So wayfinding was something of real significance. Next slide. Okay. So we use the need assessment and the identification of key findings to translate and inform the goals of the the plan. So next slide. Okay, so the five goals that we identified for the park system are developing and improving facilities, increasing the level of service and connectivity, improving physical accessibility within parks, expanding available resources for both improvements and maintenance, and then expanding park services to support improved access and inclusion. So the recommend, or the goals that we've identified based on all the prior phases for the project really informed the recommendations that we're making in the draft plan. This graphic of the illustrates the proposed park system. And as part of that, we are identifying locations where there's an existing park, and we're recommending further development of that park. We're also calling out undeveloped parkland that can be developed and then added to the system. And we're also noting areas where park acquisition is important. So you'll see on the east side of town, we've identified some acquisition areas. The facility, park facility development for existing facilities is recommended across the park system. And then you'll notice there's a few locations where there's undeveloped parkland. Next slide. So a few of our recommendations pertain to level of service. So we are recommending an increase in acres of parkland. So we recommend adopting a level of service of six acres of parkland per thousand residents. This translates to about 40 acres of parkland over the next 20 years. And kind of hand in hand with that, we're recommending an increased number of developed parks. So that 40 acres or so could be spread across three to four different parks. Both of those recommendations would enhance the level of service in those two metrics or benchmarks. Next slide, please. Okay, so I'm going to just give a overview of projects, which are part of the recommendations. So we have identified a number of park projects. There's park improvements recommended at every park. The number of projects varies, though, between park. So the I guess I'll say that every park has park improvements, and they they range based on the facility size, existing amenities, and then where they're located. Next slide. Okay, and then we've identified two planning-level projects. So one would be a trail system plan to address connectivity and access to parks. And then the other is a wayfinding plan. This would provide guidance on on and off-street signage and essentially informational and directional signage, so people know where the parks are and how to get there. Next slide. Okay, the last category I'll go over is acquisitions. So we're recommending two acquisitions, both are on the east side of town, where we've identified a need for parks. One is for an outdoor event center, and the other is a neighborhood park recommendation. Next slide. So part of the recommendations also looks at prioritizing them. And as part of that prioritization, we also organize basically the funding needed for those projects across the planning period. So we've broken that into three categories. The first five-year period, the second, and then the last 10 years of the planning period. And we are distributing projects across the entire 20-year period. So there's some projects that we're recommending see implementation in the short term. And then there's others that would happen further into the planning period. Next slide. Okay. I think with funding, it's helpful to note that this is a guiding document and that the funding estimates are meant to be a guide, kind of to know how to plan ahead and what the impact of certain projects will be. And I think, I guess, just to note that we are seeing kind of a lower cost for certain higher priority projects in that short-term period. And then the cost varies for kind of the medium to lower priority projects that would happen further down the road. Next slide. Okay, so the draft plan covers this as well. But we've looked at the variety of funding sources that currently go into projects, as well as funding sources that could be used in the future to cover projects or just general operations and maintenance. Oh, okay. Essentially, we we just want to list out all of the funding sources and make sure that they're just, it's a, it's a clearly communicated, just all of the options that could be used to fund projects, particularly things like grants or utilizing existing funds, sort of thing. Next slide, please. Okay. I just wanted to thank you for having us and then see, do you, we're happy to answer any questions now.
Thank you so much for taking all your time and effort and collecting all of this data and putting it together in a report like this for us so that we can make a recommendation to the city council. I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions. It's a lot of information, but looks like you've done a very thorough job of going over everything.
Yes, I agree on that. Comparison to previous plans is pretty significantly to the positive. I have two weed comments and then a general about one place. If you do a search in your document for Springfield, as in the city of Springfield, you'll find one. I know you meant to say Sweet Home, but I was looking through there and it was a week ago, and I've since forgotten where it was. Nonetheless. The other item is on the mapping, which is very nice to see. The city has a an up-to-date contemporary water and lakes and ponds GIS file. I recommend using it in your mapping. And then the other is, did you have much discussion or opportunity to think about the Foster Lake area, the Marina area, Lakeshore Park, the Shea Point overlook? It's all Corps of Engineers land currently maintained by the county. Did you have any recommendations on eventually having that be part of the city? Parks establishment or, you know, it will probably never be transferred to the city and probably shouldn't because it's all core land. But maintenance and development of that area, a lakeshore, is really pretty important to most cities. Be nice for us, since it's inside the city limits, to deal with that. Other than that, I think the plan's great.
Thank you. Thank you for all those those comments and questions. Yeah, I can't explain why Springfield is in there. We've not, we've done other jurisdictions' plans, but we've not done, we've not done Springfield's plan, so it's confusing me, but that was what I would, for your resume, a Scribner's error, it could be easily corrected. And then for the mapping, that's fairly easy, easy for us to change. And if there's more newer data that is available than when we started, we're happy to, happy to do that. So you could suggest adopt and update the plan with more current mapping. And then Foster Lake, we did look at, and in fact, our company was under contract with Lynn County about two years ago to prepare a master plan for Lewis Creek Park. And so we already have done quite a bit of work on on that end. It is a Corps of Engineers facility. This plan focuses really on on city facilities, but it does talk about partnerships and opportunities to expand the park system and leverage additional resources. So yes, it does. Yeah, it does at least acknowledge Foster and the inventory in the reservoir and talk about the opportunities there. But again, it's focused on on city facilities, so we didn't really focus, you know, long-term, is there potential, you know, for the city to do more? Yeah, that would need to be part of a subsequent study.
And and just to give a little bit of information from staff on that topic. Staff has spoken with the Corps about cooperation in the future and what options might be available. At one point, we thought that there might be the possibility of some land transfer, and that is no longer looking like it's acceptable to the Corps. But we certainly will continue to cooperate with them. They're the only, I think the furthest we could get is is working with Lynn County in the in the management's part of it, which is is good, would be good, something we recommend. However, it's really a staff capacity issue because we we do not have, we barely have sufficient staff to take care of the parks that we do have. And so we don't have significant resources to add to the mix when it comes to helping the Lynn County with their commitments to the Army Corps.
I guess the question with that, based on the projected cost and things, did those costs, did you include calculations for like the city management, the type, the cost that it would take for the city to also have staff that would maintain those new parks? That is that included in those estimates?
I don't think so.
We we look at sort of operations and maintenance similar to how we look at level of service per per number of number of acres or per the types of facilities that the city is maintaining. And then we compare like current maintenance levels to how the city is performing comparable to other similar-sized jurisdictions, just kind of along with answering that question, but. But no, it does not explicitly include operations and maintenance costs for each park facility as it comes on, comes online. But it does include all of the costs necessary to, to bring, bring a project online. And that, that includes like planning, design, land acquisition, if that's a component. The full cost of the project, what we find is that these are five, 10, 20-year plans. And the projects that are in the plan often change somewhat or slightly in vision from a vision to actual reality. So we, we don't think estimating operations and maintenance costs for a park that may be 10 or 20 years out is necessarily a good idea, but I can tell you that we are, the plan is very, the plan is conscious of, of those, of those costs and makes it clear that that is an important consideration as the city expands its park system, that it has to find, has to find ways to pay for operations and maintenance.
Thank you.
Chair Wood, Commissioner Journey has her hand up and I believe would like to speak.
Please. Ava, the floor is yours.
Yeah, so just to tag on the comment about operations, I was also thinking about police surveillance and how adding parks might affect their operations as well. Just comment about that because clearly this is a really robust report and I learned a lot. And I've been really wanting to have this kind of information for quite some time. So it's wonderful to both look at it and hear the report and just comment that it's this kind of operation affects all manner of what's going on in the city. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, on the, on the security issue, or I take police to mean security over all of parks. And one thing we were very conscious of when, when meeting and talking about priorities and improvements that need to be made was every park system, we want to have security cameras a part of any new improvements because we have learned by sad experience that we need to protect the investments that we are making and, and do the best we can to dissuade people from harmful activities, but also make sure that we have the evidence to enforce our ordinances in our parks.
Any other comments from the commission?
On the, the grants and general obligation bonds, are these improvements and additions prioritized by how much, how easy it's going to be to get funding for them? And I don't think funding is going to be easy to get for any of it. But are they laid out so that the ones that the funding is most likely to come are the first ones that we would be working on?
Yes, the, the answer is yes, but it's a little more complicated in that the prioritization looks at, you know, availability or, or candidates for funding. But there are other factors that we consider like community need. Whether the community doesn't have any facilities of, of this type, which would play into need. And then also what we heard from the, from the community on, on what they, what they want. And so there's maybe eight or 10 factors that go into prioritization. And likelihood of being a fundable project is, is one of those factors.
Thank you. All right. Well then, thank you so much for coming up. We'll go ahead and let you take a seat and move on to any proponents' testimony. So this is testimony from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application. All right, well. Please come on up and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Nancy Patton, 3041 Foothills Drive, Sweet Home. And I've been on the Parks Board for 17 years now, so I have seen park entry. I've seen a lot of changes, a lot of great things. And this is by far the most hard work we've ever done. And thanks to the staff for all, they've given, all the encouragement they've given us and all the information they've given us. And the only thing I would say is that it is hard getting the funding. You know, I don't know what the problem is in Sweet Home, but you know, I, I know it can be worked out. So, but I, I think this is a really good plan. I like the questions that you presented. I, I know there's really no way that you can say how much money it's going to cost for, you know, people to watch over it and stuff. But we worked really hard on it and we feel comfortable with it. These people, they came several times and talked to us. And again, with the staff, we just put a lot of work into it. And I, I'm hoping that you will agree with it and pass it on. Any easy questions?
You don't have to answer any questions.
Okay, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on it as well. All right, then we'll move on to any opponents' testimony, anybody wishing to speak in opposition to this application. And any neutral testimony, anybody who doesn't want to speak in favor or opposition for the application. Okay, then we will close the public hearing at 7:06 for discussion amongst the commission.
I don't have anything further to, to say, I think, between what they have.
I'll speak into your mic so Ava can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ava.
Your mic is turned off, I think. Is your mic, is your mic on? Yes.
Yes, there's a.
Yeah, it's on.
Oh, okay.
With their presentation and what we have here, I think it pretty well covers the situation completely.
Yes, I mean, I really appreciate the, the work that was put in and all the input that they took from the community. And then setting priorities in a way, not only to help the city decide where to start and focus, but also what would make it easy for the city to deliver on some things to our residents, give them the things that they want, some of those small things first, and then really grow. That it seems feasible and the right place to start.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Chair Wood, if I may, one, one comment, I just wanted to make sure that was on the record. Often when you have a plan like this, folks will look at the list of projects and look at the price tag associated with them, which is just an estimate. And their eyes will pop out of their head a little bit. One thing that's important to recognize for the, for the, for the public and for just on the record is that this document does not obligate the city to spend that amount of money. This document is a planning and aspirational document. And so what it does is it, it, it adopts really what the community has, it wants and what are, what we are aspiring to essentially. And when it comes to actually spending the money, that's entirely a budget decision that is up to the Budget Committee and to the City Council. And whether that happens or not, you know, hopefully we can get what we want out of, out of this plan and, and in our community. But that's a, a part of that overall discussion of priorities citywide. And so this, this document though, does communicate that, that wish to the council and to the, the Budget Committee. But also it communicates to outside sources what's important to the citizens of Sweet Home. And whenever we are applying for grants or seeking donations of that kind, trying to find money from outside the city organization, a document like this does really help show that, well, yes, this is, we would like your help in doing this. But not only that, but this is all the people who are behind it. And this has been vetted by the community as something the community wants.
Well, this is a long-term.
Oh yeah, it's a 20-year document.
This isn't, we're going to do this next year. This is 20-year.
The Corey property? Oh, go ahead, Eva. Sorry.
Is this such a robust document? I mean, the only action that I can see us taking is to move it forward to the council.
Well then, I'll go ahead and open it for a motion to recommend or let's decide what we want to do.
I recommend that we forward this to the City Council as it stands.
I have a recommendation. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All right, I have a recommendation and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed, Ava, or is that for to recommend? Okay, well then, then it will be recommended and the motion passes.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good, this will definitely help.
Yes, it looks good. Happy to have something to send on to the City Council. With that, we will move on to our next piece of business, which is application CU 24-01. Get that here. I will open the public hearing at 7:11. This applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for the subject property to be used as a wellness center. The wellness center may include an outpatient medical office, additional medical dental tenants, as well as a childcare facility. The public facility zone allows for educational facilities and municipal service facilities as permitted uses and hospitals and overnight clinics as conditional uses. The application is applying for a conditional use per SHMC Chapter 17.24-0.040D. Any other use that is compatible with the purpose and intent of the zone and would have off, and would have off-site impacts that would not significantly exceed those that are typical of any other conditionally permitted uses listed in this section. Tax Lot 12900 contains approximately 23,780 square feet and is in the public facility PF Zone. All right, I will, before we move on, we need to make our declarations. Do any commissioners have any personal bias on this issue?
No.
No.
No. Any conflicts of interest?
No.
And none? Any ex parte information?
No.
I have none.
No.
Okay, then we'll move it to Angela for the staff report.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for the review, Chair Wood. All right, I'm going to skip ahead and not read the summary. So based on the review of the FEMA Flood Insurance Rate Map Panel 41043C0913G dated September 29, 2010, the subject property abuts the special flood hazard area from the south and east of the property lines. However, the property itself is not in the flood hazard area. So based on the review of the city Sweet Home Local Wetlands Inventory and review of the National Wetlands Inventory Map, subject property does not contain inventory wetlands. The subject property has frontage and access from Calmaya Street and 12th Avenue. The subject property has access to city water and sewer services in Calmaya Street and 12th Avenue. The use is listed as a conditional use in the underlying district and complies with the development requirement, requirements of the underlying zone. Staff finds the subject property is in the public facility zone. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for the subject property to be used as a wellness center. The wellness center may include an outpatient medical office, additional medical dental tenants, as well as childcare facility. The public facility zone allows for educational facilities and municipal service facilities as permitted uses and hospitals and overnight clinics as conditional uses. The applicant is applying for conditional use per Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 17.24.040D. Any other use that is compatible with the purpose and intent of the zone and that would have off-site impacts that would not significantly exceed those that are typical of the other conditionally permitted uses listed in this section. The proposed use shall comply with the development standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 17.24.060. Based on the above information, staff finds the application complies with these criteria. The characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use considering size, shape, location, topography, and location of improvements and natural features. Staff finds the subject property was vacated by the city of Sweet Home in 2019. Since 2019, the building has been used as a haunted house and was occupied by the Sweet Home Fire District staffed until the end of September 2024. The fire district continues to use the building for storage purposes. The site size, shape, location, topography, location of improvements and natural features are adequate for the proposed use. Based on the above information, staff finds the application complies with these criteria. The proposed development is timely considering the adequacy of transportation systems, public facilities and services existing or planned for the area affected by the uses. Staff finds that the proposed wellness center is timely. There's no additional development plan for the site. However, the city of Sweet Home plans to renovate portions of the building to suit the proposed tenant's needs. Excuse me. The building is situated just one block from the public bus stop in the heart of downtown, providing convenient transportation access for all residents. There is access to the building from Calmaya Street and 12th Avenue. Per Sweet Home Municipal Code, 17.44.060L, one parking space per 400 square feet of gross floor area plus one parking space per two employees is required. Only 2,270 square feet of the building will be occupied, requiring six spaces. The proposed number of employees occupying the building is six, requiring three additional parking spaces. There are 19 existing parking spaces at the site, including one handicap parking stall. There is room to add additional parking spaces should there be a need in the future. Staff finds that there is adequate parking for the proposed use. City water, stormwater, and sewer services are existing for the site. There are no existing planned development for the site that will be affected by the planned use. Based on the above information, staff finds that the application complies with these criteria. The proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use of surrounding properties for the preliminary uses listed in the underlying zone. Staff finds the abutting, abutting the subject property to the north are commercial businesses. Abutting the subject property to the west is public parking lot. Abutting the property to the south is a Hope Center Zoned Residential High Density and abutting the property to the east of the Sweet Home Fire District Zone Public Facility. The proposed use will not alter, alter the character, character of the surrounding area. Based on the above information, staff finds the application complies with these criteria. Any negative impacts of the proposed use on adjacent properties and on public can be mitigated through the application of other code standards or other reasonable conditions of approval that include but are not limited to those listed in this chapter. Staff has not identified any negative impacts to adjacent properties. To ensure compliance with the standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code, staff has included proposed conditions of approval that are listed in Section 4 of this report. Based on the above information, staff finds that the application complies with these criteria. Conditions of approval. In approving the conditional use permit application, the Planning Commission may impose, in addition to those standards and requirements expressly specified in this chapter, additional conditions determined to be necessary to assure that the proposed development meets the decision criteria as well as the best interests of the surrounding properties, the neighborhood, and the city as a whole. The provision of the Sweet Home Municipal Code allows the Planning Commission to impose conditions of approval. This is an opportunity for the Planning Commission to determine if conditions are needed to ensure compliance with the decision criteria, as well as the best interests of the surrounding properties, the neighborhood, and the city as a whole. To ensure compliance with the standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code, staff has included proposed conditions of the approval listed in Section 4 of this report. These conditions are primarily a customized list of existing local, state, and federal standards that apply to the application. Conclusion and recommendation. If the Planning Commission approves this application, staff recommends that the conditions of approval listed below are required in order to ensure the application is consistent with the findings in the review and design criteria in Section 3 and as required by the Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to the Land Use Board of Appeal, LUBA, may only be based on review and design criteria contained in Section 3. Recommended conditions of approval for CU 23-01, that is incorrect, it should say 24. The property owner will complete all building renovations and repairs within one year of the date of the approval of the application for CU 24-01. The property owner and tenants shall obtain and comply with all applicable local, state, and federal permits and require, and requirements. The applicant shall submit copies of the required permits and licenses to the city of Sweet Home Community and Economic Development Department for inclusion in the record of CU 24-01. for inclusion in the record of CU twenty four dash zero one. Planning Commission Action. In acting on the conditional use permit application, the planning commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. If the application is deemed, if the application is denied, the action must be based on the applicable review and design criteria. If approved, the planning commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff's recommended conditions are included in section four. Appeal period pursuant to the ORS two two seven point one seven five, the planning commission may establish an appeal period of not less than twelve days from the date of the written notice of the planning commission's decision is mailed. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission's decision on this matter be subject to a twelve day appeal period from the date that the notice of decision is mailed. Order after the planning commission decides, staff recommends that the planning commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the planning commission. The order will memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval if the application is approved. Motion after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the planning commission's options include the following. One, move to approve application twenty four dash zero one, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report. The setting of a twelve day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Two, move to deny application CU twenty four dash zero one, which includes adopting the findings of fact, including the setting of a twelve day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain, or four other. Do you have any questions of staff?
I do not. Anybody else have questions of staff?
No questions.
Just one. Does the concerns of the, from the fire chief Tyler, does his concerns on the fire extinguishers or fire alarms and that system, is that going to be permitted and reviewed through the city's building permit review? Or does that need to be specifically added to the conditions of approval?
So it's already being addressed and Adam can give you an update on that.
I would be more than happy.
Hold on. In your packet, it does have the, there's reports in your packet for the fire and the rest of it will be determined during the building permit packet. So some of it has already been addressed, which are the samples in your packet, so.
I can talk to you about it after the meeting too, Joe.
Okay. I figure one way or the other, it'll be handled.
Okay.
So I just had a typo question on section D under staff findings. So abutting the subject property to the north are commercial businesses. Abutting the property to the west, isn't that where the fire station is?
Oh, yes, I had that backwards. Yes, thank you. The east is the parking lot and the west is the fire district. Yes, thank you, Ava.
Right. Yeah, and I also had the same concern about the fire chief's concerns. Those are really serious and very important.
Yes, and those are being addressed with the renovations through the building department, so.
Does, is this plan to use the top floor only then? Will there be any use of the lower levels?
At this time, I believe it's only the top floor.
Is the city the applicant? Or do we have applicants?
Uh, yes, the city is the applicant.
We don't, unless you want us to testify.
You've done enough. So then, at this point, I'll go ahead and open for proponent testimony. Testimony from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application. All right, any opponent testimony, testimony from those wishing to speak in opposition of the application. Please make sure you sign in. Well, I have to wait for that. And then once I get it, then I'll invite you up. Yep.
I probably.
Not yet.
I know.
Okay, all right. Then it looks like we do have some opponent testimony. I will call first Judy. Good enough? Uh, right up, you come up here. Come on up and have a seat and just state your name and address for the record. And we just ask that any comments be kept to three minutes. Wonderful, thank you.
Hi, thank you for hearing us. We're from the.
Can you start with name and address, please?
I'm Judy. Good enough. And I actually live in Corvallis at six oh seven five Philamith Boulevard, Corvallis, Oregon. But I'm on the board of the Hope Center. And we have a concern about this, the wellness center. Because we have a problem already with, we have a home. I don't know if you're aware of what the Hope Center is, but it's a, it's a home for women and children. And many of them have come out of domestic violence or some sort of violence. And it's a place of refuge. And we house, anyway, we house them there. But we have a problem with homeless frequently hanging out in the location. And where our concern is, if you open a wellness center and have mentally ill clients, they may gather there and it might be a place to attract more loitering and that type of thing. And so we're trying to avoid that as much as possible. So that's my concern. And that's why we're here.
Well, thank you for coming and sharing your concerns. Anything else you want to share with the commission?
We just need a safe place. We try to have a, we need it to be safe for our ladies to go to their car. And we've had people there before, you know, across the street. And, and we've noticed that there's been more activity over there since they've opened the, is it Ridgeway? Ridge, the new facility. So there's people hanging out a little bit more, so. We're just concerned about it.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming.
Okay, thank you.
Chairwood, if I may, just to address real quick.
Yes.
Staff is not aware of any mental health services that I'm at being provided, being proposed at that location. This would be purely wellness as in physical health.
Okay.
That may be true, but you're gonna, my understanding is you're gonna do, as the future comes, you may open something for.
I don't know of any plans to do that.
Okay.
There's, this is strictly, nothing that I have heard or that any staff that I know of have heard of anything having to do with mental health there.
Okay. Right, thank you. Then next I'll invite Donna Brown. Please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Hi, my name is Donna Brown. And my address is, what is it? Ten thirty six Twelfth Avenue. I'm in the house of the Hope Center. But I run the, the director of the Hope Center. And I thought I read something about the mental, but maybe I was wrong. But the concerns I have, I've been there since we reopened for three years. And the first year was a nightmare when they finally got rid of the homeless camp. And then they put the fence around and that helped tremendously. We had all our faucets broken, we had our windows broken, we had things stolen, we had cars broken into even after they moved them. And then it finally settled down in the last two months or a monthish. We've had to call law enforcement and I feel like it's a waste of time. We've put trespassing signs, we've had things stolen again, and it just started again. So that's kind of where my board member is saying. And, and, you know, I would love to put a fence around like the fire department has because that's what I work with is homeless. I mean, not homeless, I work with domestic violence and I'm a domestic violence survivor. And I have an assistant that lives in the building and I live in the house. But, you know, sometimes we have to go out there at two o'clock in the morning and there's someone out there. And that's kind of our concern, you know. And I, my question was that I didn't understand on it is the overnight clinic.
There is no overnight clinic.
So let me clarify that. So on there, it says, "The public facility zone allows for educational facilities and municipal service facilities as permitted uses and hospitals and overnight clinics as conditional uses." It's giving examples of things that are similar that are already allowed in that use. This is not listed, wellness center is not listed as a use, but these items in the public zone are listed as permitted uses. So what we're proposing is something similar to what is already allowed. So that is not what is going to be in there. It's just examples of what it is similar to.
Okay, okay. Yeah, cuz I, that was, I was like, oh, my gosh. Because we have to, our facility is locked down at all times because we've had the violent husbands show up, the violent boyfriends show up. And so that was a concern because I think, I was gonna say, do they, does this place just serve sweet home residents? Because I bring in girls from outside and they get followed and we have to call law enforcement. And I'm coming from it, my ex would have went to stay the night over there type thing. So that was the concerns, but it was also that we just got everything. We're fixing it up outside now and, and like I said, they broke both of our faucets outside. And that was just the concerns and for the safety of the women because actually, the girls I have now, they're all, the exes are in jail, but it took a while. And, and I know this might not be on the question, but where would you, because I don't know, I've never done this, where would somebody propose a stop sign in a place?
This, this is not the, the. Planning Commission doesn't do traffic. But I'd love to, we'd love to talk with you. Sure, sure.
And it would help the, the place, the new place.
Let's chat after the meeting.
Okay, perfect. And I think that's all I had because I did read mental health. So, and yeah, someday we'll probably get a fence around like the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. All right, and then I'll invite up Brandell Bratz. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Brandell Bratz. My address is fifteen thirty Tamarack Street, but I live at the facility as a resident manager. And that facility is the Hope Center. And I had, I too was under the impression that, that this new zoning would allow DNA treatment and mental health facility or mental health treatment in that facility. So my comments are based on that. And I believe that having drug and alcohol or mental health patients put so close to domestic violence patients, puts that, our clients, our clients, domestic violence clients, puts them and their children in danger. So if there is any future, the zoning changes may allow, like you're saying, you're not proposing this right now, but is this zoning change going to allow in the future for there to be a drug and alcohol or mental health facility there? That's a big concern because once the zoning is changed to allow that sort of thing, we can't change it back.
And this isn't a question and answer, but I, just to really quick, because you may, it may affect the rest of your testimony. This is not a zone change. This is a conditional use permit, which is limited to just this particular use. If there was any other change of use beyond this, it would have to come back for another conditional use permit.
For a wellness center only, they're applying for, to be able to make a conditional use permit to make it just a wellness center. Anything else they would need, a new conditional use?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm, my concern is that this wellness center may include drug and alcohol or mental health patients.
That's not, never been the, what, what, and in my opinion, based on what I know of the situation, it should have been labeled medical clinic because that's closer to what this facility actually is, is a medical clinic. There, it's always been proposed as that. And so I apologize for any misunderstanding that the term wellness center has, has brought up, but is, and we can, I would recommend to the commission that maybe as a condition of approval that it specify that this is a condition of approval for a, you know, for a medical clinic because that's essentially what it is.
So there's no way that this.
Oh.
Oh, and that's.
There was a, I guess there was a possibility of a daycare thing and I think that's why that term then, okay.
Medical to wellness center because there is, there is the possibility of a daycare. Nothing confirmed. That's just they want, the reason the wellness center is listed that way to include possible daycare, possible dental, possible medical. So, but it can't be any more than that, so.
So my concern is that there might be possible mental health or drug and alcohol.
That would have to be in this application.
Okay, and so, and then zoning change, obviously, it's not going to be a change. You're gonna have to ask for permission again. And again, I stress that bringing, just since Ridgeway has moved in in the last month, we have had, like what was shared by the other testimony, we have had an increase in homeless people just hanging around. And just the week before last, we ended up having to call law enforcement to have a man who was threatening, intimidating from that very part. He had to be removed from that very parking lot. And they helped him move his truck out onto the street, but by city ordinance, they couldn't make him move it any further. He just had to move it to, so then he was directly across from Hope Center and yelling and being loud and I, I was very, I suffered from anxiety myself and I was having anxiety attack and I was completely angry. I didn't, wasn't, I was completely disappointed that the police officer couldn't do anything. Said he couldn't remove the man. The ordinance said he had the right to stay there. And I argued with him about an ordinance that says you can't sleep in your truck in a public place. And so finally, somebody came later after I was not able to calm down because the police officer said he couldn't do anything about it. But later on that night, somebody did come and remove that person. He went, left for the day.
Brenda, I apologize for interrupting, but your three minutes are up.
But, yeah, so that's a huge concern. There's already an increase in threats and intimidation by people that that facility is bringing. And our clients are not safe.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your concerns. I don't have any additional opponent's testimony. So I'll move on to any neutral testimony. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor or not, nor neither in favor or in opposition of the application. All right. Then I will go ahead and close the public hearing at seven thirty six and open it up to the panel for discussion.
I have no questions.
I don't, I don't have any questions. I can understand and I'm empathetic to the concerns about increased traffic across from the Hope Center where people, you know, they go there to find peace and refuge and that. they go there to find peace and refuge and that, and that can be very stressful when new people and when more people are showing up more often, um, across from that building and creating a bit more distress. I do believe though, having a tenant in the building makes it a safer place long-term. That there is someone to hold accountable for the safety of the parking lot, um, for the care of the people who are there. And someone to work with and speak to about the issues, whereas if it's an empty building, it's being used for storage. Um, it's very difficult to get anyone to help in a situation like that, to maintain that property. Or to get the authority to move people off the property. To me, having a tenant there only makes our ability to have security there stronger.
Yes. Hi.
And we're done, ma'am.
Yes, yes, ye- yes. I did hear that once they moved in, because there's a new business there that has brought new traffic and there has been people on, that, you know, people that have been disruptive and causing fear and anxiety in the residents at the Hope Center. I hear that. I, I'm empathetic to it. And I see that it is, and I believe that it has happened with that more frequently since they moved. But again, I do think that as they establish their business there and then it continues to be, um, a regular business that people in our community are using more frequently, that it will become over time a safer place.
Right, and having additional businesses in there, whether it's just two or three, provides more eyes in the area to look out for disturbances like that.
Yeah, and, uh, the, um, the conditions that the staff put in, the, um, approval, uh, the improvements and renovations to the building, I think will also help reduce that cuz they will, it will show improvements in that building that will make it less desirable to stay there overnight or to choose that area as a place to, um, to stay, to think that that's the appropriate place to be.
Chair Wood, Commissioner Journey would like to speak.
Yes, please.
So I think it's really important for us to recognize that the Hope Center is housing vulnerable populations, women and children. And that vandalism has occurred that we have, we have no control over. I do think that having somebody in the building, you know, in the old days, the city hall, that was city hall. So there was a lot of activity there. And Hope Center, just because of its location, is a vulnerable physical act, um, physical location. Um, so I just want to stress for the record that we do recognize the vulnerability of those mothers and children. It's very serious. Other than that, we are not empowered to, um, to require certain building accoutrements, lighting, cameras, et cetera. That's up to the property owner and the tenant. But I would hope that they would be very sensitive to what's across the street.
Um, well, that actually makes me think of a question for then staff about, um, the exterior improvements of that building and what, um, there's already renovations and repairs that in the condition of approval will be completed within a year if we approve this with the conditions as stated. Is there anything that's in the staff report? I don't remember seeing anything about the exterior security of the building, lighting, perhaps cameras?
So any of the building, that wouldn't be in this application because you guys are approving the use, not the actual renovations of the building. So it just pertains to the use of the building. Um, any renovations such as painting, lighting, cameras, that will all be part of the building permit packet um, for the renovations and the city will take note of these concerns, um, as we're going through the renovation process.
Okay.
Now, the, the exterior lighting that was there present when it was city hall, which I believe is sufficient and it's still there and still operating. So it will remain, uh, it will continue to operate in that form, that the exterior lighting, it's, it's already in place. Um, one thing I do want to make sure that our, our, the members of the audience know, I, I and other staff members would be happy to talk with folks afterwards about any concerns. A lot of what I'm hearing sounds like a law enforcement, um, matter that, that we do have resources to take care of. In particular, hearing that somebody may be camping in a vehicle at that site or anywhere near that. Uh, I just want to reiterate that is actually against our city ordinance. There is a specific place where people can go if they need to camp in a vehicle, but that is not one, that is not an approved location for that. So that is enforceable and, uh, and we can help with that. We just need to make sure that we are aware. Um, and so I appreciate the folks coming forward and, uh, we'd love to talk with you after the meeting to discuss more, uh, of any issues that people are experiencing.
And then if anybody in the community saw something that they thought needed, like a parking lot that, like the light was out, the security needed to be increased, what is the best way for them to submit those requests as well, since it pertains to this?
So if there, i- 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 at any time, if there's a public safety issue, uh, we encourage people to contact the police department. Now, if there is a, uh, a facility issue with, uh, you know, if, or if there's a street light for out, for instance, those are owned by Pacific Power and each pole has a, has a number on it. If they just copy down the number of the pole, they can either contact us and we'll pass it on to Pacific Power or they can contact Pacific Power directly to let them know that that light is out. And we want to make sure that areas continue to be lit, especially as we're getting into the dark time of the year. And so any, any concerns about, other concerns about the exterior of a facility, the property owner is the, is the proper person. We do have a, you know, city code does require certain things of people. So they're welcome to, um, to submit, uh, information to city hall about what they're seeing. And we will either get it into the right hands or direct them as to, as to the best place for them to direct that concern.
But this conditional use permit does restrict what businesses can be, what activities can be in the building. And those activities should not affect Hope Center detrimentally. The added activity should make things more, uh, more open and, uh, like you said, people in the building means there's more eyes and more activity. So there should be less danger, less threat.
The services being provided by Ridgway, uh, there are the same as the services that were being provided by Ridgway at their previous location. And I'm not aware of any issues that arose at that location, which is not far from, from this location. So, uh, it'd be surprising to me to hear that, that suddenly a problem developed when it's the same patients and the same services being provided.
I hope would be that, that Ridgway is noticing this increased activity as well and they are making and taking steps to increase their security now in the new location so that they, cuz they want their patients to feel safe and their doctors and employees to come to work in a safe place as well. But, um, it's good for everybody. Eva, do you have anything else, Commissioner Journey? Okay. Well, then I will look for a motion.
Sure. I would, uh, move to approve the application CU twenty-four dash oh one, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report. The setting of a twelve-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? And that's all of us. So the motion passes. Close it? All right. That concludes the public hearings for the night and we will move on to Angela for staff update. Thank you everyone for coming.
So we, um, you will not have a meeting on October third. We have no business for October third. However, there will be a men- meeting on October seventeenth and one on November seventh. Both of those are also conditional uses. It's a conditional use time of year. Um, so just wanted to bring that up that you don't, you won't have one here, um, in two weeks. I'll just emphasize the Harvest Festival again, you know, make sure you guys come October fifth. Pie bake off, chili cook off. I think I almost have enough judges now, so it should be a good time. And then we have TSP.
Uh, first, though, we, we had talked last time about a joint public, a joint work session. Yes, unfortunately, we were not able to get that. We ran into some issues with the city council being able to schedule at that time. So, uh, the next date that we've nailed down is Tuesday, October eighth at five PM. Okay, and I, well, I hope that we uh, have enough of the remainder of you to, um, to have a quorum for that meeting. So if you are, other than Commissioner Wood, if any of the rest of you are not able to make that, please let me know as soon as possible. And we will, um, see what we can do.
Blair, I, Blair, I think that I probably will not be attending that meeting.
Okay. All right, we will, uh, see what we can do.
I'll send out the email for the rest of.
Yeah, we'll have an email out, out to those who are not present tonight. It, getting this scheduled has been difficult. So we will do our best to, uh, find a time when we can get the most people in attendance.
Seems funny. It's so easy to get two commissions to together, right?
I like, I prefer, yeah. The joint idea sounded like a good idea at the time and now I'm kind of questioning in wisdom.
You'll be wiser next.
Yeah, sure.
So our planning commission meetings are October seventeenth and November seventh.
Yes, those ones are ones we do have applications for already.
I'll get those on, on the Tuesday, October eighth. Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
October eighth. I'd be there.
Good. All right.
Don't worry about it.
Anything else? All right, well then I'll adjourn our meeting at seven fifty-two.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eva. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Blair, I take it the land use one oh one package.